Good evening. Welcome to the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, April 23rd, 2020. It is 7:15 and we are here on, online as per the Governor's Emergency Declaration. We are allowed to do that, fortunately. We are also being recorded and broadcast on WC A. And they may be live streaming this on various services as well. If you are watching from home through one of the live streaming services or on TV, and you wish to participate, you will need to connect to the Zoom meeting. If you want the link for Zoom, if you go to ashlandmass.com and scroll down to the calendar, you'll see the Planning Board Meeting there. And if you click on that, it will bring up the Zoom link to join. If you want to join by phone, you need to call 646-558-8656. And the meeting ID number is 997-357-4837. And I'm sure you're not getting this, but it is on the town's website again. So if you go to the town website, you will get that. And there's also a password of 019111. So with that said, on our agenda, on our agenda tonight, we have two public hearings on zoning articles for town meeting. One is to make a change in the definitions on the wording, changing it from animal kennel to animal clinic. And another is on the design review triggers, I believe. We'll get into that. And then we also have a discussion on the decision on 29 and 41 Alden Street. The public hearing has closed on this, so it'll just be the board discussing the decision on that. And then we have some other administrative matters minutes and a brief discussion of the demolition delay process, so that everybody understands what's going on with that. With that said, we should start with the first public hearing. I'm going to share my screen, I believe. Because I think I can put the text up. Alright, hopefully you can see the text of the, the hearing notice, which I will now read. "The Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 23rd, 2020 at 7:15 PM via a Zoom Video Conference Meeting, accessed via the URL written there, or calling 646, the number I just gave out, with the meeting ID number, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 282 Zoning, Section 3 of the Ashland Zoning Bylaws. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Ashland zoning bylaw, Chapter 282, Section 10, as follows, cross out our eliminations and bold underline is the new language. "Section 10.0 Definitions: Animal," and then crossed out kennel, and added clinic or hospital, "premises for raising, harboring, or care of domestic animals for a fee. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should submit comments to the Planning Board ahead of time and/or appear at the time and place indicated above. The proposed zoning amendment language is available at the Community Development Office and the Town Clerk's Office during normal business hours or at the town websites in the, the Planning Department page, ashlandmass.com/193/capital P for planning. For more information or to submit contacts, submit comments, please contact Peter Matczak at 508-532-0100, extension 7927, or at p m a t c h a k at ashlandmass.com." Alright, so that is the change we are talking about. For anybody who isn't familiar with this, this is a change to the zoning bylaws. And as such, the process is the Planning Board holds a public hearing, which is what this is, where the Planning Board discusses it, gets feedback and input from any residents or concerned parties, and then votes a recommendation for town meeting. Town meeting then has the power to adopt or not adopt the article, and it requires a two-thirds vote. So with that said, I think we should start by having Peter explain the motivation behind this.
Thank you, Preston. So just to explain a little bit, since I am on board here, we had a question about clinics, what the definition is, not for a clinic, but as a kennel. And in the definitions, if you kind of dive into them, we actually have two definite, the word kennel is used in two different, separate definitions. So therefore, I'm looking to make, I'm proposing this change to correct that, that issue. What it comes down to is when you, excuse me. So Preston, when you, when you open up the definitions, we have a commercial kennel, which is the, the commercial establishment in which more than three dogs or domesticated animals are housed, groomed, bred, boarded, trained, or sold, located on at least five acres of land. So that is the definition for a commercial kennel. And then the term kennel is used in the current term, animal kennel or hospital. And so just to, to kind of clarify the difference between the two definitions and the two different, I would say, extreme land uses, I would like to remove the, the word kennel and put clinic in the definition, therefore matching them up to the existing language within our use bylaws.
Alright, are there any comments from the board?
I have a comment. I'm just Googling, actually. First of all, the, I want to see the definition of the word harbor. I haven't finished, not finding that yet. But the premises for raising, now does that still fit in with clinic or hospital? The raising of animals? That seems more like a kennel or a, yeah, like where you, a breeder. For raising versus harboring, that's a, trying to get back to my definition of harboring. Place on the coast where vessels may find shelter. Give home or shelter too. So that still could be. I guess I'm not sure about the, the definition part now, if it fits clinic and hospital. So raising and harboring, harboring maybe, but raising seems odd.
I feel like caring covers everything.
So the caring of.
Caring is such a, caring is such a broad term, but I mean, all of those other words, like raising and harboring, are also doing anything for something is caring for it. So I mean, that's a broad term, it covers everything.
Does hospital and clinic imply a medical care, doesn't it? Well-being and medical?
So my eyes, yes, clinic and hospital are more of a care institute or facility.
Like care could be dog sitting, I'm taking care of your animal versus a medical care or.
Yeah, and harboring is like boarding.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's basically just a safe place.
But I think we, we do have a problem with the definitions here, because if you go down to the definition of kennel comma commercial, which is not in the advertised warrant here. It says, "A commercial establishment in which more than three dogs or domesticated animals are housed, groomed, bred, boarded, trained, or sold, located on at least five acres of land." Which is interesting that that says that a commercial kennel, something that otherwise would be a commercial kennel, if it's not on five acres of land, it's not a commercial kennel. Which is kind of weird to put in a minimum lot size in the definition. It seems kind of.
But if I want to go to the high rise.
Strange thing to put there.
Dog kennel. And then the one thing you'll do know. Excuse me.
Are we trying to specify clinic or hospital? And we should just describe it as what it is. Premises for medical or care of.
For the medical care of domesticated animals for a fee?
So we'd have to kind of change that whole definition.
I think it would just be taking out raising, harboring, and/or, and putting in the word medical.
The, the.
Did that address the problem in the bylaws?
Yeah, the other thing I see here is if you look at the places in the zoning where kennel is referenced in the, the use table, there's one line that says, "Animal clinic or hospital, semicolon, kennel." And it cites Section 3.2, which I think is where the kennel side, the commercial kennel stuff comes in. I haven't looked at Section 3.2 to check on that. But.
You're, you're.
So they're both, so they're both being treated the same. The only other place where references it is in, what, 856, which is the downtown district. And again, it says veterinary animal hospital kennel in compliance with Section 3.2, lots greater than five acres. Which lots greater than five acres in the downtown district is kind of moot, I think.
But that, that says commercial, this one doesn't say, this one just says animal kennel. It doesn't say commercial animal kennel, right? So this isn't addressing the same five acre kennel?
I, I think if we want to fix the zoning on this, we probably are going to need to do more than just the definitions. Because as I read it, the, there's not a difference between the, the allowed usage.
So I have a question, and like, would it be prohibitive of like, animal control kennel?
Would that be, are you talking about like, a town-owned kennel cell?
Well, kennel commercial is a, is specifically a commercial establishment, which is different, which is, which. So kennel municipal would not be.
The animal control kennel owned by the town, I don't know if that's like applicable, but I wouldn't. I've been in there, I would know that I would qualify it as a clinic or a hospital in there, even if they probably nurse these guys back a little bit, it's mostly just cages.
Yeah. I think what I was just trying to do is fix the definition slightly, but I think I've uncovered a little bit more to unpack with the definitions.
Well, because it seems, it looks to me the way it read, reads now is animal kennel or hospital is saying either kennel or a hospital. If you put clinic or hospital, they're both like emergent, you know, medical. But maybe is it describing, is it just this line, does it describe both? A kennel, kennel or a hospital? Or is it just describing the hospital or, or care, medical care?
Well, I think we're having a little overlap in the definitions of an animal clinic and a kennel. And that's where I think the harboring and breeding come into play, which Trish pointed out. So I think unpacking those two terms within the definition is what we need to do.
You could change, you could change the word harbor.
We're not on public yet, are we?
No.
Yes, we're just doing the board first.
So this is the definition of a kennel or a hospital is defined as place that raises, harbors, or cares. Just a definition, right?
It's just a definition, and you know what, maybe I need to.
Is there another definition that specifies just the kennel, not a commercial, or is there a difference?
There is a separate definition on down that is kennel comma commercial, that is very specifically a kennel.
Commercial kennel.
Yeah, commercial kennel. I know we also have kennels in town that, I, I believe you have to have a kennel license if, to have more than six dogs. So there are people who do essentially commercial dog sitting, and they keep themselves to six or fewer dogs at a time. Or at least they're supposed to.
Well, then it looks, looks to me almost like to, just the way it is now is almost okay, because animal kennel or hospital is a premise for raising, harboring, and care of domestic for a fee. Then a commercial kennel is a different definition of a bigger kennel or a.
I think it seems though, that, that while I think you're right Dale, that the definition, if you kept it commercial, if you kept it animal kendle, kennel, which would be non-commercial or hospital, does maybe fit into that definition, but a non-commercial kennel, which might be up to six dogs, and hospital clinic are completely different animals, right? Like a brother term, and it seems like the, you know, it should be separated, maybe, that maybe it's the animal kennel definition, commercial animal kennel definition, and clinic or hospital, you know. So it seems, it seems a strange grouping to me to put those two together. Where a animal kennel, a small one, could even be in someone's home, it sounds like. Where obviously a hospital or clinic, you would not think would be.
Yeah, I believe under, I believe it state rules, more than six dogs triggers a kennel license. So it would make sense if we're revisiting how we zone for kennels, that that would be a trigger in the zoning as well.
Yeah, also I think.
Would be interesting to understand the line between that six dog limit or the kennel license, and then the commercial kennel.
Yeah, I agree with Trish. I think it should be separated, rather than just change to clinic. It should be a definition for an animal kennel and another definition for animal hospital, because you probably can't have an animal hospital at your home, right?
I actually have a friend who does in-home veterinary service, so she kind of does, but that's not an Ashland, but.
It just seems like it would make sense, like you said, it's so two different things. It would make sense to have two different definite, a definition for each one, a definition for a kennel and a definition for a hospital. So if we just split those up and somehow.
Yeah, I think, I think we're on the right track, splitting up the.
Clinic or hospital, and then add another definition for animal kennel.
And I also think it makes sense, and if we're going to do, I think taking this to the next step is to actually split those two uses out of the use table and have separate, you know, and have separate lines for.
And you could put, you could add in, it could be animal clinic or hospital, because if you only say hospital or only say clinic, those are two different things too. Hospitals sometimes are long-term emergency care, clinics that give shots or do, you know, different things. So if we had one that was animal clinic or hospital and another definition for a kennel.
Yeah, there's also a difference between a kennel where you would be, where the dogs would be boarding overnight, and say a grooming facility, which is, you know, it's not, a grooming facility would be similar, more similar to, I think, a clinic or hospital in that people are bringing their animals there for some service for a relatively short period of time.
So is an animal clinic, isn't that like the daycare, aren't they kennels too? Where you drop your dog off for the day or have him at his time, and that's a kennel, right?
Yeah.
That, in my eyes, that's a kennel, which, because it's a commercial use, yeah.
Because not, not specifying how long they're there, but actually what they're doing there. If they're babysitting or watching the dogs is kind of a kennel to me. Or, or even breeding them, maybe, but not doing medical.
And that's a new use that's come up, that's come to play, I would say, in the last number of years, is doggy daycares, right? And so right now, in my eyes, a doggy daycare is a commercial kennel within the bylaws definition. So maybe we need to define these a little bit more, a kennel, a commercial, and doggy daycare, and what they are.
Yeah, because I don't know of any doggy daycars that are five acres of land. I think it needs a little more research.
Okay. Maybe I jumped the gun on this one.
Yeah.
You're pointing, you're pointing out some things that we need to take, address, just think it just needs to be a little more detailed.
So why don't we just motion to continue this to another night after we take public comment?
Yeah, we do need to take public comment. So is there, anybody in the public would like to comment? I can't actually see people because of the screen sharing, so Peter, if you would handle letting people on?
Mark turn off.
So we have.
There's not many, there's not many folks on.
Yeah, Mark is the, Mark, Mr. DeSoney is the only one that's besides WackaTV. So if Mark doesn't have any public comment, I think we can motion to continue this. Until. The next meeting is going to be on May 4th. However, you know, we can continue to that meeting, and then we can kind of discuss this further, May 14th, I'm sorry.
Alright, and we also have 81 West Union, then I believe.
That's where we continue, 81 West Union Street. However, I have not received any new updated plans. And we also got a new application in for 5 Holmer Street, a site plan approval process.
Okay, this will probably not be too long. Should we also put this at 7:15? Or should you rather move this out? What, what do you think makes sense?
Maybe eight, maybe seven, you know, maybe, I think the site plan approve, I think this could go around, you know, 7:30, 7:45.
Let's, let's put it at seven.
Hello?
Mark, do you have a comment?
Hello?
Yes, Mark?
I have my volume down, so I got no reply, I can't hear the reply. So just change the word harbor then to housing out of the whole thing, and see how it works from there. Now I'll turn my TV up to hear your answer.
Yeah, that's part of what we're looking at. I, I think we want to have a comprehensive look at how the whole thing fits as far as when we change, if we change the definition, then how that impacts the use table, and whether we have the full answer, or if we need to go back and advertise something different. And so we're going to look more into that and continue this and have the answer at the next hearing, hopefully.
14th at 7:30? Want to motion?
Yes.
Move that we continue this hearing until May 14th at 7:30 PM?
Is there a second?
Everybody's muted, you're muted, Trish.
Second.
Alright, that's made and seconded. We'll take a roll call vote, because we are online here.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye. That passes 5-0. Alright, and sorry for the slowness here. Get ready for the next one. Alright. Share my screen again. Alright. "The Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 23rd, 2020 at 7:15 PM via Zoom Video Conference Meeting, accessed via the link you're now using, or calling the phone number that was mentioned before, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 282 Zoning, Section 9 of the Ashland Zoning Bylaws. To see if the town will amend, vote to amend the Town of Ashland zoning bylaws, Chapter 282, Section 9, as follows. Crossouts are eliminations and bold underline is the new language. Section 9.6.3, number four, properties with projects requiring design review per Section 9.4.1.7, with the point one being added, of Chapter 282 zoning of the Town of Ashland Code. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should submit comments to the Planning Board ahead of time and/or appear at the time and place indicated above. The proposed zoning amendment language is available at the Community Development Office and the Town Clerk's Office during normal business hours, which aren't happening right now. So that is exclusively at the town website, ashlandmass.com/193/planning, with a capital P. For more information or to submit comments, please contact Peter Matczak. And his phone number is 508-532-100, extension 7927, or by email at pmatczak@ashlandmass.com." Alright, Peter, you want to explain this one? I think this one's a little simpler.
Yeah, this one's simpler. So there's a couple of triggers that trigger the design review under, excuse me, let me get my numbers right, 9.4.1.7. And so we're just cleaning up, I, what I believe is just a, just a, as a typo within the bylaws, to make sure they correspond correctly with the design review criteria.
Uh, yes, that would be correct. I just, I just looked at the zoning code online, and there is a 947, which is building design, which is what is currently referenced there. And it doesn't look like it makes sense to me. Anyone else from the board have a comment?
Typo.
Yeah.
I think it was a prescriber's mistake somewhere in the bylaws, and we're just kind of, we're just kind of correcting that. And it was actually something that the, that the, the Design Review Committee found, I would say.
Is there any public comment on this? Again, I can't see because I'm sharing my screen.
Yes, yes.
Alright, Mark?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mark.
Let me turn my volume, no, I'll turn my volume down, but I can't hear your reply. So let me just finish, and then I'll say I finished, then you reply after, thank you. Now, for this, I don't think there is a typo. I think the Design Committee wants to change, to get their more opinion into a zoning, without going through town meetings, I figured that number was a misnomer. I'm just looking at that and saying that zoning was there for years now. And the new zoning committee wants to, wants to change, wants to change it on their own, because they think they can have a better voice of building size and with whatever the case may be. So I'm understanding that they want to do that, but, but it's saying that it's a misprint by saying one number is off, that one is not, not supposed to, that four is not. But it's saying that it's a misprint by saying one number is off that one is not, not supposed to, that four is not supposed to be there. Let me just make sure, the one is not supposed to be there, saying it's the seven. It's already this opinion from one committee and they want to change that. But the zoning itself has not changed and shouldn't change from because of one number for one committee. Thank you.
Is there a nine point four point one point seven anywhere in our bylaws?
Yeah, why don't I read nine point, okay, section nine point four is site plan review. Nine point four point one is applicability. Site plan review shall apply to, and then it's got a number of, of different items, the last of which is seven. Which says all applications for building permits, including six or more parking spaces. Unless a site plan and design plan review have been endorsed by the planning board. After consultation with other boards, departments and committees, including but not limited to the following. With a bunch of committees listed. So that.
So it would change it, if you take that out, it would change it to just nine point four point seven.
At nine point four point seven, which is what it currently refers to. It says, building designs for all buildings other than single and two-family structures. Consideration should be given to architectural style and its relation to the prevailing character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood. And the town. Factors to be considered include the use of appropriate building materials, screening. Brakes and roof and wall lines and other architectural techniques. Variation in detail form and. Sitting should be used to provide visual interests and to avoid monotony. Proposed buildings shall relate harmoniously to each other with adequate light, air circulation and separation between buildings. That's a great passage and we're not changing it. But it's not something that says which projects site, uh, design review applies to. Which is what the whole point of the place we're changing it is.
Yes, so we're, we're. We're just. Streamlining it, pointing to certain projects that require, that require it.
Yeah, that, uh, we're changing in nine point six point three, which says applicability and authority. The D R C shall review applications for site plan review submitted under section nine point four of the Ashland zoning bylaw. Provided the property exists in the following areas of town. One is downtown and Pleasant Street, two is Route one thirty-five corridor, three is Route one twenty-six corridor. And four is properties with projects requiring design review per section. And it should be nine point four point one point seven. And that's the typo because it should be referring to. The six parking spaces or more site plans.
Got it.
So the, it's basically, it's the references to the wrong number in there.
Okay.
Quite clearly a typo.
I'm good.
All right, are there any other comments from the public or from the board? Or should we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor by roll call?
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. That passes five zero. Excellent. All right, oh, and then now we need a motion to make a recommendation to town meeting on this change.
So move. Dale Buchanan.
So, so Dale is out a motion for town meeting to recommend to pass this change.
Yes, it is. So move.
Is there a second?
Joe Ruberton.
Joe, Joe, was that a second?
Second, Joe Ruberton.
Okay, yeah, all right, all in favor?
Dale Buchanan.
A roll call, I should say.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. That passes five zero. All right, we have completed that. Good. The next item on our agenda is the decision on twenty-four, twenty-nine and forty-one Alden Street. We passed, we voted at our last meeting to close the public hearing. And to grant the, both the design, the site plan review. Which required a, at least three votes and I believe two special pro, permits, which required at least four votes. But those votes were all contingent on. The board approving the decision documents with the conditions. Which we have received in our email. The hearing is closed, so it would not be appropriate to take in further outside comments at this time. But that said. Peter, do you have any, any comments? I know you emailed this out to everyone.
Yeah, I emailed it out and town council looked at it. So with that said, I'm going to mute Mark.
Mark, thank you.
Every, you know, I, I emailed it out, there was a couple of questions and concerns that came up, Dale. Dale Buchanan had a couple of issues. Regarding a snow removal plan and a lighting plan, which needed to be added as a decision, which I'll email the Alp for. So we can kind of build those in. And then Preston, you got back to me about the stockpiling of material. Should not be greater than ten or fifteen feet because it is a commercial. I mean, I'm sorry, a very dense residential area. And so I'll add some, some conditions in about that or reduce that amount. And then also obviously add something in. About dust, however, here later on in the, as a, as a condition item. And then the other thing is. Preston, I did get your email, in your email about striping in front of the building. Right now, there's no parking, striking along Alden Street, so therefore, you know, should it be a requirement? To stripe an area in front of the building to identify parking spaces, you know, I think that's up to the board. And then the other item was, Dale, you mentioned, I'm sorry, streets, uh, street sweeping during the construction. Construction period, make sure that's in there too. That's usually a boilerplate condition that we have in there. And then the kid, the tree, the number one condition was concerning the applicant's. Donation of a hundred and fifty trees to the town of Ashland. We are going through a fairly robust downtown redevelopment plan. And so which, and that plan actually calls for the planting of about, I would say about a hundred and. About a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty trees, or I would say plants throughout the downtown. We're going to add a lot of plants. With that said, I want to create some flexibility for the town to work with the applicant to either. You know, have a donation of trees and or a payment in lieu of. Which could help offset the town from a financial standpoint. The, the purchasing of downtown trees within that project. But also it doesn't have the D P W. Giving a hundred and fifty trees to go plant, which is just more where on top of what the D P W already does on a daily basis. It's so regarding that, I think that's the, that's the other crux of what we need to kind of talk about tonight.
All right. Go ahead, Joe. Go ahead, Joe.
So on the topic of the trees, I guess, I think he made the comment also about three, two to four inch caliper trees. I think we should put it in there so that it's specific and we don't get downgraded. And I think, I guess, you know. I think your proposal is thoughtful in terms of offsetting costs for the town. Although I do think. I don't know, I mean, I'd rather have three hundred trees than a hundred and fifty, but I, I see what the rest of the board thinks about this. I, I'm not trying to minimize the, the work for the D P W and. You know, I don't know how quite how to navigate that, but. I don't know, I'm just curious what the rest of the board thinks on that.
I think they agreed, what did they agree to?
He said, he said like three to four inch.
No, I mean, how many? You were saying how you want, you'd rather see three hundred.
No, 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 I'm saying like, what, what? What Peter's proposing is, is instead of asking him to give us a hundred and fifty trees, we're asking him to give us the dollar equivalent of that. So that the town can use that money to buy the trees for the downtown streetscape. Because the downtown streetscape is going to, going to involve the planting of a bunch of trees, right?
Yeah.
So, so I'm saying, you know, the town was going to install a hundred and twenty trees. This, this exercise, this, this, as part of this decision, he was going to donate a hundred and fifty trees. Right? If we do it the way Peter wants, we're going to end up with a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty trees. If, if we don't do it this way, we end up with a hundred and fifty more, we end up with one, a hundred and twenty trees for downtown and a hundred and fifty trees to go other places. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, specifying it for downtown.
Oh, no, no, I'm not.
I, I get, I get what you're saying. It's like, we're already getting trees for downtown, they're already slotted, that that's part of that project.
Yeah.
Where we have a bonus of another hundred and fifty trees. So let's have more trees, not just say, okay, now we have the cost to offset the downtown project, we have more green.
Right.
We have more trees versus more money.
Yeah, we have almost three hundred trees instead of a hundred and twenty trees, right?
There's a point that, you know, depending on when these trees are going to be delivered, we may not be ready for them.
Fully get it.
Would be in favor of the value of the trees being put into an account to be spent on a hundred and fifty trees. A year down the road or something like that, if we don't have a spot or the capacity to plant them. Right now, or whenever they're available.
But they. I was gonna say.
Tree is not making, not paying off somebody else and some other projects trees.
What if, I mean, is it possible to do like in phases too, like? Could they do fifty and then put it deposit, like an account for like the other hundred? So we get something going in the meantime, but also have cash later?
Yeah, I, I think we're micromanaging this a bit too much. I, I think from the decision standpoint, we should add the, that. The developer offered to a donation of a hundred and fifty, two to four inch caliper trees. Because that, that makes a big difference in the value.
And he said it.
And that.
And the town can figure out what to do with them.
That the, the town can work with the developer to. On a schedule or plan and that the town will accept, will consider. The, the, the accepting a cost equivalent is good. But the more general the language can be, as long as it, the town has control over it, the better. So if the, if we can say, you know, if, say we end up, you know, he says, well, we've got these. Three inch caliper trees, they're, you know, fairly generic, you know, whatever the cheaper trees are. And we say, well, we want four inch caliper trees that are these really nice trees that are going to really work well in this location. But they cost twice as much, so we'll count them as two trees each, you know, that, you know, there might be some negotiation. It'd be, we want to write the decision in a way that the town has the ability to negotiate on the particulars. For what is useful for the town. As for the idea of saying, let's, let the downtown that's already planned. Get its trees that it was planning on getting and we'll put these trees somewhere else. If we had a plan in town, a tree planting plan. That said, we want, you know, five hundred trees planted whenever we can get them and here's where they go. So we, we could direct them, that would be great. I don't think we have that. I think the downtown is the only place we have a list of trees planted.
Can I jump in on that, Preston? So on the, on the CPC, we've had the town forest committee. Come before us a number of times for different funding requests. And you know, one of the specific things that they've talked about is that a number of the large oak trees that were planted back in the forties. In the fifties in the town forests have now kind of hit their, they're aging out, they're dying. And that due to the quantity of deer in town and the lack of, you know, natural. You know, lack of hunting and, and other things that manage that population, that we actually have a problem in the town forest where. The deer aggressively consume seedlings of plants and other things. And so you really, like, there's strong concern by the town forest committee that there's not regeneration of the town forest occurring. And so they're, you know, they're trying to set up deer fencing in areas, trying to keep deer out, trying to see what they can do to mitigate and manage some of that. And, you know, I guess, when I look at this, this is a perfect opportunity to potentially impact that. The town forest committee is one of the most active, aggressive and, you know, leaned in organizations in the town from my opinion and from what I see. And like, I think that, I think personally, if you told them, hey. We can get you fifty or, or sixty-three, you know, two to four inch caliper trees. Of your choice to go in, I didn't think they would, I think they would jump at the chance frankly. But again, that's not confirmed, they haven't said yes, but like, I see that as a, I see as an opportunity to help the town forest. And deal with something that, I mean, I think we all recognize the value of the town forest as a town asset. I think that Ashland is recognized at some level for its town forest, one of the largest in the metro west. So, I mean. I, I, I think the comments about the financials are good, don't deliver me a hundred and fifty trees and park them in a lot somewhere if I don't have a plant. Like, I, I think this, I think the. How you're trying to do this is good, but I, I, I do think, I, I would, you know, I, I do think that the town forest. You know, could make use of this to a degree and probably make use of a large quantity at some level. Just my opinion.
And I agree, I think, I think we should keep the, the trees separate. I don't think they should be just geared automatic to. Town revitalization.
Yeah, I, I think.
We'll lose the, the bonus that we got.
Yeah, I, I think the decision would read a lot better if we kept the first sentence and then just said. The applicant shall work with the planning department. For, to develop a plan to donate the hundred and fifty trees or equivalent value. In, in a manner that meets the approval of the planning department.
Yeah.
And just leave it at that and then.
We get the tree.
If we're able to direct some of them and save money on the, the downtown project. Because I know that the town budget is going to be taking a big hit this year. So anything that saves money is a really good thing. And at the, on the, and if we have the ability to put some in the town forests, that would be great. Or if there, if, I, I know there's been some talk of having a tree planting plan in town. This would, could also be, depending on the timing, could go towards that if that happens in time.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have it kind of set aside and we don't have to make the decision here. And now based on everything else that's going on, but we know the priority is that, that we're trying to, we're trying to make things more green. We're trying to plant more trees, but given the situation with everything happening right now. You know, have to see what that call is, but the planning board one maybe wants to be involved as kind of a hard one. Prize in this, so.
Okay, I'll work, I think I understand where, where, where everyone's go, whatever, the direction of the board. And I'll try to draft something up and I'll resend that out tomorrow.
I have a couple of comments, a couple of comments while we're on that, that kind of, those permit conditions. That was condition number one about. So in condition number two, and I'm sorry, I didn't send these to you in advance, but someone else might have picked up on it, but. It says two hundred and forty volt electrical vehicle changing accommodations.
That's a typo.
Yeah, and then the, in number three, it's a little confusing, it says, this is about dumpster and rubbish pickup. Shall not commence on any day before seven A M. And shall not begin beyond seven P M. Doesn't that mean it shall, it shall end before seven? Seven PM. Doesn't that mean it shall it shall end before seven PM? Not begin beyond, so it means I can begin.
I'd yeah, I'd replace begin beyond with occur after.
Right, right, you know, or something like that. It was can, and then. And then the very next sentence is all activities on the site shall confirm to section two oh four. I assume that means should be conform to section two oh four. Alright. Um.
Yep.
Little things.
It'll be right the next time it's copied and pasted.
Well, that the begin before stuff kind of, I mean, my understanding would be that that means that like. If your truck pulls up at like six fifty-five, but you take fifteen minutes to empty the dumpster and put it back and everything, that that's. As long as you started the emptying before seven, that if you go a couple of minutes over, they're not gonna call the cops on you. Would be what I would interpret it as, but I'm not. I this first time I ever heard it.
Yeah, I I think it should be worded that it's supposed to be done by seven PM. You know, they shouldn't be coming at six fifty-five and just pushing up against the line, but.
There's this kind of confusing language to me, whatever way it goes.
I always thought it was a hard seven stop, so I I mean, I I think that's better to make it clear like that.
Okay, sounds good.
Easier to enforce.
I also on these two documents, I wanted to um. With the voting. I don't think it's accurate, so for the site plan and design plan review. I was listed as a yes. I think I should be an abstain on that.
I had you was a, I think what I understood with the vote, and correct me if I'm wrong, Trish, if you you abstained from the special permit votes, but you voted for it.
Well, I went back and I looked, listened to the tape before this meeting, so.
Okay.
I can listen to it again, so I believe I abstained from that one, just to be accurate, and then on the on the special permit. On the use. I agreed. But on the height, I abstained, and so those votes need to be separated. And you can double check that, but that's, I I did lis- listen to the tape before the meeting and made some notes.
Okay. I'll take a note. I I. I'll double check that. That's no sweat.
Um. Oh, oh, sorry, within within the trees thing again, the. Um, it's a very small thing. Um, oh, that language is gonna change anyway, so never mind.
Okay.
Um. I think there was, oh, one one other question. I don't know. I don't know how thoroughly we're gonna. Go through all this, but we had, I think this is from Pond Street. Where we um request the plans. Where is it? Number twenty-six. The applicant shall submit a full exterior set of drawings and details and construction drawings and details.
That's a but that's a boilerplate uh condition that we that I we had on. And so really, when he submits for the planning for the for building permit, you know, he's submitting the same same thing to the planning board.
So is that language right out of?
It was out of the twelve Pond Street that we voted on. I can take that out. Uh.
It's not even taking it out necessarily, but and I I'm. I'm surprised I didn't talk about it then. But that was a little a rush right before Christmas, I think. But um. It's just a little unclear, like a full exterior set of drawings and details. Typically is with included within. The construction drawings and details, like the construction drawings and details of the much larger set of drawings. And within that. Is. The drawings that depict the exterior, right? So I can talk to you about this offline too, but it's. Construction drawings, a set of construction drawings include all the plans, all the exterior elevations and all the details. In the construction drawings, so you're kind of saying. And this and this when construction drawing says it all.
Okay.
And then I'm not sure we want a whole set of construction drawings because a lot of that is way out of our purview to.
I think what the the main point of that, I think, and I can work with you offline on this, Patricia, and I agree with you a hundred percent. And I think it it makes sense to kind of work through this, is that the construction drawings. Though those drawings reflect what was, you know, what was approved in the elevations that were presented to the planning board.
Right, and that's why I'm wondering like as a as a planning board, what we're looking for. Um, and what we're wanting to see. I think in at twelve Pond Street, it was because. The drawings were good. We got them to a good level, but there's they were still a little bit like. Well, what is that? You know, it's a little a little cartoony, which is. Um, okay at that level because it just takes a lot of work to get it up to an a place where you can build it. Um, so it's just like, well, what do we want to see? Are we wanting to see the finished? Drawings of the exterior, which is what we. You know, what we typically want to look at. And the and the details related to the exterior, so we can say, oh, that's wood. Oh, that's copper. Oh, that's whatever. And 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 that's what we want to see, or we wanting to see the whole. Set, like the whole, the basement plan, the electrical plan.
So I don't think we want to see the whole set. I think we're just looking at the exterior to make sure the exterior is is isn't. Is cohesive with what was approved in the elevations.
So if that if the planning board agrees with that, then you and I can work on the right language. Because this language, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense as a. Uh, as an architect, there's it's it's strangely repetitive.
Yeah, I I would say that the goal here is to make sure that what they build. Uh, does not have any surprises uh from what the rendering showed. And I'm happy with whatever language you think achieves that goal.
Okay.
Does the rest of the board agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll I'll look at it and we can decide on some language that we can, we can send around.
Okay.
Um. Trish, if you're, I I wanna let you keep going. If you you got something, I I'm going a little off script with something I just wanna discuss with you guys.
If it's on the conditions, now's the time.
It's on the it's on the conditions, but I'm just saying it's not in regards to a specific item in the decision.
Yeah, I think I think those are the edits that I had, so I'm I'm good.
So. Um. These comments are, these comments are more general to overall the enforcement of our conditions of our of our decisions. And less specific to this developer, right? But. You know, as we've seen with some recent projects in the last twelve months. You know, we've seen some incident instances where um developers, one one developer in particular. You know, it's had an had a number of issues where they were bumping up against the decision and the terms of of the decision. And i- in my opinion. You know, there was an effort to hold hold that project to account. But to me, it didn't, to me, that that our ability to do that didn't quite have the teeth that. Or 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 the efficacy that I that I think that we want. We we spend a lot of time, many, many hours talking about. Deliberating on things. Um, ultimately voting, and we spend more hours drafting an opinion, and it's all to, you know, perform our capacity for the town and in the way that. You know, we hold the project accountable to those efforts is our decision. And so, you know, when I, in my opinion, in the last year, I've seen at least, you know, I've seen one. Um, project where I think. Um. We were. You know, where we we might not have had the strength in terms of holding to our. To the terms of of the of the agreement that that I would that I would have liked. So the cuts of the chase, you know. Do, you know, is there an ability to put in some very punitive um penalties? For failure to comply with these. I again, I'm not targeting this developer. I'm saying in general, I'd like to see more teeth. And and better um. Adherence to what these what these. Uh. Decisions say, so um, I I don't know how the rest of you feel. Like, I don't think it's it's. You know, I don't want to get over the top with this, but I mean, it it it's not a problem on every decision, but I've seen it. Substantially on one decision, and I think you guys understand where I'm where I'm talking about there. So I don't know what we can do or what you think, but. Um, I don't know. I'll be quiet. Let you react.
Are there uh are there uh are there remedies in the application, the permit and all that? Does that spell out what happens if you don't comply? Within the application, no, it's really. Somewhere so there's somewhere that says if you don't apply with this, this is what happens. Is there anywhere that says that in our? These decisions are therefore, you know, they're enforced by the town and the zil- in the zoning, in really the zoning officer in that in that sense. Uh. Appu- you know, what oh, the the, you know. From my standpoint, it becomes a zoning enforcement, which is therefore needs to be executed by the zoning enforcement. Officer, if he if if the town believes that the decision is not being held up by the applicant, that's what it comes down to. Uh, can we? We we don't have anything in our bylaws that goes above and beyond um that process right now, but I think that's. Looking at everything and unpacking the conversation, Joe, I think that's a bigger, that's something bigger.
Than this decision.
That than this decision. And 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 at that point, I would, to continue down this road within the conversation. I would say, you know, we need to bring in town council. Just to kind of have, I would say for more of an educational standpoint. Uh, for all the board members to understand what the timeline is. Um, and what the process is regarding the point, this board's ability. Uh, in in going, you know, in in really what the layout is from a town standpoint. Yeah, I understand where you're going. Uh. You know, I've seen some. I think we need to have something somewhere that spells it out. At some point, because that otherwise, how do you impose any kind of? Penalty without. There's no specified penalties for anything. I don't know how that works now, but.
Yeah, I know several years ago, we had to go and do a stop work order. Um, and uh other things like that to get the developer to wake up.
And is that just in the in the bylaws that we can do that if they don't comply, or where is it?
Well, it's the zoning enforcement officer's powers to be able to do that, I think, Peter, right? You know, but I, yeah, and so, but I'm I'm going beyond that. I'm trying to say, you know, we we did that. We did stop work orders, and we saw the behavior again after the stop work orders were issued. And we had, you know, and we 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 saw that it didn't have effect. I'm talking about, you know, work. I I get, we're not gonna do in this opinion, so I I just, I'll stop. Makes sense. I understand what you're saying, Peter, and it makes sense that like you can't do that within the context of this. Decision in that it's town council and 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 a bigger uh town bylaw kind of a construct if we were gonna go down the path.
Well, it's not a bother, you know, it is it. It's a bigger conversation. That's what I'm trying to say, Joe, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, you know, what you're, and I know, I I I I believe I understand what you're you're talking about. And I think what it comes down to is if we're going to build something of that nature into each. Decision. That we we as a whole, which would include, I would say, town council. Come up with boilerplate conditions that we as a board put into every decision, right?
Yeah.
As conditions uh and more kind of continue on. And so at least, you know, you as a board member have the confidence that, you know, you are putting in the right. Mechanisms, right, or the check valve, the check marks, right, or or the, you know, whatever you want to call them.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Through the account to act.
Yeah, my mind goes to financial, you know, it's fine. We had a dust condition. For every day you violate the dust condition, you don't have the equipment on site to spray the dust, a ten thousand dollar fine, you know, here we go, like real teeth. And where it's becomes financial and people are like, well, you know, I better I better comply. So anyway, I get it. Thanks to for humoring me. I'm sorry for taking up the the time.
No, 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 I think I think it's something that we we can unpack and we can continue on the road, you know, and I think it needs to become a boil. But i- if if we if we do this, let's do it thoughtfully. Let's do, take our time. Let's get the right information.
Makes sense.
Implement it, right? And then um we kind of go from there. It's like, you know, in every decision, the town's gonna require an ASBIL plan, right? And a foundation plan, and so we have something to verify where the infrastructure is. On our end, if there's, you know, a case of an emergency, right? What you're saying is let's create plate plate mechanisms. And and I think we're at opportune time here as as everyone's involved and obviously, you know, I'm on board here and, you know, and and. Obviously moving things, you know, along, you know, within eleven months I've been in the town of Ashland, we can, you know, work on this together.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
All right, um. You know, one issue I had, um, Peter mentioned briefly, uh, condition sixteen, uh, soil stockpiles shall be a maximum of twenty feet high. Uh, I think twenty feet is too high in this area. Uh, also, they're not doing a lot of uh grading work. Uh, so I I don't see any need for stockpiles that high. I think that's just asking for problems. Um, I'd like to think they wouldn't be intending to have them that high. Um. I I I think I'd prefer ten feet. I I could see somebody pushing for a little bit higher. I I don't know what the rest of the board feels. I'm also not a construction expert, so I don't have a good sense. Myself of what they would want. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure either. I can see um, I can see a pile being higher than that. But it should be pretty short term while they're digging foundations. You know, that would be the only time that. That that should be there, you know, then it all would be re- should be removed. Since there's no basement, you know, on this thing. Um, but I'm not sure. Um, given how much of the. Given how much of the site is taken up by the footprint of the building. If there's then still enough remaining. Um, space, not only to manipulate the equipment, but to to pile up the. The soil before it's removed from the site. So plus the stuff that you might want to keep, the topsoil to respread later. Um, there's not a, there's not a lot of space. That site to manipulate a lot of soil, so, um, but I'm not sure either. It's not my.
Can we lower it to fifteen?
I don't know how real, I don't know how realistic it is, so.
I think fifteen would be better to max it out at, and. Like Trish said, I don't think they're gonna be doing a, making a lot of piles. That high.
I think they may make piles that high, but it seems like then they should be, it should be short term. It seems like the foundation goes in. Those piles disappear and anything remaining that doesn't go back in the hole is taken off, taken away from the site. So it should be short term versus stockpiling large amounts of soil that you use for regrading later. It shouldn't be an issue on this kind of flat site. But short term, there might be some big piles. I'm I'm not sure. It's just my uh my opinion. But I'd be comfortable with fifteen too, and if they have a problem with it, they can. I'd be comfortable taking it down, and if they have a problem with it, they can let us know, you know, I guess.
All right, let's let's go with fifteen.
Uh, I I think that makes sense too. Uh, I I agree. I agree with your point. Twenty feet does feel high. I think Trish, your comments are are good too, so I think it's a good approach.
All right, uh, any other changes? Uh, going forward, there there are enough changes. Do the board want to see the changes before the decision is signed or or? Are we confident? Um.
We're gonna email us, right? So if anyone has an issue. Yeah, so what I'll do tomorrow and and I'll I'll try to make all the changes, and then I can email the the final two decisions, obviously. One is a special permit, one is a site plan, because of the two different votes. Um, in our council's uh perspective, we should all, and I agree with her, we should always split the two decisions. Uh, however, the conditions are. Are mirror images of each other. Uh, and then the only change is coming to findings. Under a special permit, the findings are different than the findings in the site plan approved.
Do we want to have a separate? Do we want to have a separate, uh, decision for the, each special permit? Especially since the votes are different?
I don't think it's necessary. I think, I think those, the description of the votes could just be simply split up.
Yeah, I can, I can do that. I think I understand what you're, you, you're looking for, Trish. And, and I, and I did put that at the bottom and I can split though, uh, within each decision.
And then we can, and then we can, you can make sure everybody gives you the thumbs up before we start signing it, right? That's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. And if you, everyone gets back to me and says, I'm good. And then I can email Preston and, 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 uh, have, have him execute the, the decision. I think it makes sense. Uh, yes, we would. But it, you know, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, it may make sense just for, I, you know, in my eyes, it makes sense. I don't know if, and if anybody agrees, um, to have Preston sign. Uh, if everybody would like come into the arrangements. Uh, and I'm happy to make those arrangements, arrangements with everybody. Uh, obviously we'll, we can, however, it will be a little bit more of a lag time.
So otherwise it's basically, um, you know, you send us back, you make the changes, you send it back to us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with any further comments or typos that we find, we get it to a point where we, we all feel very confident with, with it. We all give an okay that, yep, it's good. Preston can sign and then he can come in and sign. Cause if we pre-agree to that.
Correct.
That sounds good.
All right, so, um, i- if that's how we want to do it, uh, I would need a motion to authorize, uh, the chair to sign, uh, the decisions, uh, on this project on behalf of the board.
I move that we authorize the chair to sign the decisions on this project, the whole board.
Seconded.
All right, uh, it's been moved and seconded, uh, roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Trish, that can go again.
Oh, Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. That passes 5-0. All right, um, I think that, uh, covers this. Uh, so, uh, the next item, uh, there is a review of minutes from March 26th. Did we receive those minutes?
I've got them.
They're on Emma's email from last week or a few days ago.
Oh, yes, I see. Uh, bodyboard minutes. Yes, let's do the March 26th minutes. Oh, how exciting these minutes are.
Actually, I only had one correction, I think. Way down in 146. Um, just to, just to something reads correctly. He mentioned that the town meeting may be held as scheduled, however suggested delaying. It seems like that however should be a but. He mentioned the town meeting may be held as scheduled, but suggested delaying the zoning articles until the fall. The however, unclear.
That, that does read better. I agree.
Other than that, I thought they were pretty complete, from my point of view. Clear.
Does anyone else have anything?
Nope.
Anyone have any, uh, ready to make a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, March 26th, uh, with the correction?
I move that we approve the minutes of March 26th with the correction.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, oh, roll call.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Uh, Joe Ruberton, muted.
Joe Ruberton, aye, unmuted.
Uh, Preston Crowe, aye. Uh, that passes 5-0, uh, so we have approved those minutes. All right, uh, the next item on our agenda is administrative matters, uh, future meetings, public hearings, uh, and a mention of a review of the demolition delay process. Uh, Peter, you want to start with the demolition delay process?
Uh, I do. So I know there was an inquiry, uh, about the demo delay. Uh, and I just want to, you know, talk about it with everybody, uh, and answer any questions. Um, when you read the demo delay by law in Ashland, is the number one trigger for the demo delay is the filing of the building permit. Uh, once that building permit is filed and a building, uh, was built before January 1st of 1940, therefore it triggers a demo delay hearing, uh, which would be with the, uh, which is, would be scheduled with the historical, uh, committee. However, the town of Ashland has, does not have a current, uh, historical committee yet. Uh, well, at this time, and so the Board of Selectmen have been acting on that part in hearing all demo delay, uh, public hearing. Uh, with that said, I know it came up at 29 Alden Street. And, and 29 Alden Street was a building, um, and if you actually look, uh, and I've done some research on it and it is in the, um, it is mentioned in the historical preservation survey in the town of Ashland. The building dates back to the 1890s and it was a, uh, I believe it was, I remember correctly, it was a shoe fat. Um, with that said, the building is obviously going to be, uh, or going to trigger a demo delay, uh, hearing under chapter 125 of the bylaws. Uh, with that said, um, I believe from my, you know, from my standpoint, in reading the bylaws, the town, the planning board has acted full faithfully. Um, and, uh, and we haven't done nothing wrong. Uh, I worked in a couple of different communities, as everyone knows, and all the communities have the demo delay bylaw. Uh, and typically the demo delay bylaw, uh, indoor hearing takes play, place after any special permit indoor site plan is approved by the town. You go, uh, the, you could put it on the same track if you would like, uh, and go and have a parallel hearings. However, in this case, it really is up to the developers. It, it's really risk management, uh, what it comes down to. Uh, not risk management, that's a bad, that's a bad explanation. But it's really permit management, I would say, right? Uh, and how he looks to attain to move that process forward. Uh, and in this case, you know, the developer, uh, will have to do this. He knows about it. Uh, and he needs to do it at a time. Uh, and he'll cross that bridge. I was, he has got, he's going to have to deal with the demo delay when he applies for a building permit.
It's actually, you know, I just, I just went to look, it's actually on the, the de- the demolition permit versus the building permit. So for the owner of the property could apply for a demolition per- permit tomorrow. But the demolition permit would trigger that they have to look at the age of the building to be demoed, whether something's built there or not, you know, would.
Correct.
So, um, but yeah, I, I think from my point of view, it's just always really, it's important that we make it, um, clear when we see something like this, whether we deem it of historical significance or not, that, um, that the parties are aware that this building will have to go through that process, no matter, no matter how significant it is or whose opinion about how significant it is, that has to go through the process anyway. And that's just Ashland bylaw. So I think it's important that, that the, I mean, Peter, you said that it's, that, these guys are, are fully aware of that. But it makes sense that, that's something that we, um, that in the future, make sure we bring up maybe, you know, what is the age of this building to be torn down? Okay, well, that's going to, you know, um, it should be in our discussion, I guess, that, that, that process. I, uh, maybe it's not appropriate for, to be in our process, but, um, as long as it's, uh, you know, dealt with along the way.
Are they notified when they apply about that or it just comes up whenever it comes up?
So when they, when they apply for a demolition permit, uh, the building commissioner has to do, you know, in, in the folks in the town hall office, actually look and they, you have to submit the property record card. Uh, and then upon that, the property record card with the assessor, um, obviously holds the date, um, that that building was most likely constructed.
I'm, my question though was, um, when they first came in to submit the plans and, and submit this for a special permit, are they told at that point, explain that this is a historical property? Or is that something that they have to research so that at the very beginning, I'm just saying, moving forward, if someone's doing that and there might be a chance that the, they don't want to have that building removed or changed, it could wipe out their whole thing.
Correct. I, you know, I think when they, you know, when the applicant came in for this example, you know, it was, it was stated that this building needs to go through this process and that the building is old, was prior to 1940 and will trigger the demo delay by law, uh, when that, when, when that demolition permit is applied for.
And that is, that happens with every, every permit that comes in, it has an old building on it, right?
Every demolition.
So you pass it on to the applicant?
Correct. Every demolition per, on the demolition permit, it says, you know, which year it was developed. There's in, in, and so in this case, yes, you know, that's something that is answered on, that's a question that needs to be answered on every demo permit, application.
Just saying it would be goo- it's good that if they know about it before they start the whole process because it could make a difference.
The demo permits are, are, they're talked about in, you know, working in town hall, you know, many people come up to the counter and, you know, demolish demo permits and this topic is discussed. I would say fairly, fairly regularly, I would say.
Cause it holds true. It, it's not just like a commercial developer property. If someone wanted to, um, take down part of their 1910 house, this would still be triggered. Is, is that right?
Correct. Any, any part of an old house that predates 1940. Um, you know, I think, uh, in it, in this, and that's pretty, and that's across the board, obviously. Especially in the downtown air, you know, the downtown area where you, you know, most buildings probably do date back to prior to 1940. Uh, um, in, in most buildings, unconforming concerning setbacks and, and the lots. Uh, yeah, this does come into play because, you know, the change of the alteration of the structure, um, does trigger this and it also triggers sometimes the zoning Board of Appeals depending upon what is being proposed, I would say.
All right, so just to, to explain case for whoever's watching out there, this, we're not shirking our responsibility when we approve a permit and it's a historical building, right? It's, it's not our job to do that. It's until they apply for a demo permit, nothing happens, right?
Correct. You know, it's, it's my job within the town hall to, I would say, inform them of the, you know, inform in any, any interested party regarding, you know, if it's the, if it's an applicant, it's a developer indoor resident that is looking to do an alteration to their home and their home predates 1940. Now, if you look into the bylaw, you're correct, Dale. Um, there's nowhere in chapter 125 states the planning board is the granting authority, right? In chapter 125, the historical commission is the granting authority concerning chapter 125 demo delay. So in no way does the planning board sidestep its responsibilities. And actually in the decision, we actually outline it within the site plan approval process. Uh, there is an item which talks about historically, actually number one scenic views and number two historically significant structures. And, and within the findings, I did add some language regarding the demolition delay in the history of the building. And in doing so, that's a key, um, trigger to that developer, to the developer that their project will have to take this course of action through permitting, uh, prior to the receivable of any and all building permits. Um, that's what I would say there. But it's a very, i- i- you know, reading the bylaw, it's a very organized, um, and laid out step by step process regarding demolition, uh, delay. Um, and, and like I said, you know, it, it's really the, you know, my job and the building commissioner's job and everybody that works in town hall up on the second floor in the development services is to educate people about the processes. And, uh, and I'm, I'm always happy to answer any questions when the town hall is obviously open to the public. At this stage of the game, because of COVID-19, I, you can, you, you know, I, I would answer anything by email and or over the telephone.
Thank you. Just wanted to get that out straight because, so the people know how the process works.
Yeah, and I had a conversation with, I've had, you know, conversations and, um, I can, I, I feel, I, I, because I've worked in a couple of different communities, I've worked under a couple of different bylaws. And I would say, you know, you know, Ashland has a very good demo delay by law and it, and it's very similar to most communities in the Bay State. Um, and it, it's all a matter of reading it through, understanding what it means. And then, then, you know, and actually going through that process from a step by step standpoint.
Thank you.
All right, other administrative matters, uh, scheduling?
No, the other one thing, obviously we're, the next meeting's probably going to be via Zoom. Uh, I haven't heard anything regarding, uh, when town hall will reopen. Uh, so I think, you know, the Zoom meetings, to my understanding, are going to be, uh, the normal way we meet, uh, as we kind of move forward through the processes of the planning board. Uh, we did get a new application in for five homer, uh, the old market on the corner. Uh, somebody is looking to, uh, turn that storefront or, 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 or space, I would say, into a dentist's office, uh, which is a great thing. Uh, and it does require site plan review because, uh, it's a change in use in a commercial building. Uh, they're doing, you know, obviously there's the parking's right there on the street. So, uh, we are going to go through the process, um, of cycle review on that particular structure, I would say.
This is, is this the former Farmer Ram space?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep, right there. And so, um, you know, I know they're, they're changing, uh, they're looking to make some, a few alterations. Um, but, uh, but that's going to be on our May 14th meeting. And then, uh, we can kind of continue on 81 West Union Street was continued to May 14th. I have, uh, as of today, I've not received new plans for that, uh, project. Uh, however, I, I, I do believe that they'll be submitted fairly soon. Um, and then.
He's frozen.
He's slowing down.
You're, you're frozen, Peter.
It's going to come really fast.
Sorry, Mike.
You need to get.
So, so yeah, no. There's, there's, besides that, there's nothing new, I would say. It's Emma's birthday today, so if you see Emma, uh, it's her birthday and wish her a happy birthday.
I, I'm sure I'll be out partying in the same area.
Happy birthday, Michaela.
Happy birthday, Emma.
Yeah, so, uh, that's why she is not, uh, attending the meeting tonight, I would say.
Uh, that's a very good reason.
I'll have to make her a cake and eat it. It did with Joe's. Put your name on it too. I even put your name on it. Everyone's like, who's Joe?
Joe and Emma.
Other, um, reports, member reports?
I got nothing.
Nope.
Oh, I have one thing and I'm going to share my screen for this. Uh, there is a fundraiser going on. Um, this is the Go the Distance for Ashland Virtual Race. This is a fundraiser for the Ashland Emergency Fund. Uh, and you sign up for, uh, any week that you choose to or multiple weeks and, um, you, uh, you run or walk the distance you say you're going to and post pictures and, uh, you get a T-shirt. So, um, it's a great way of raising money for a good cause and motivating yourself to uh, be more active than you might otherwise be. So the, um, a- as you can see, I've got the, the webpage up. It's at oakrealtma.com/events is where you sign up for it. Uh, so, uh, Steve Greenberg sent that out, um, and, uh, it's a great cause, so. That's all I got.
Okay, ready for a motion?
I am.
All right, I move that we close this meeting at 8:50 PM.
Second.
All right, uh, roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Joe Williams, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye. Uh, that passes 5-0 and thank you and good night.
Good night, everybody.